What allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
So our first item on the agenda is to receive oral communications from members of the public. Members of the public may address the select board for up to three minutes. The select board shall not engage in discussion on topics raised during public comment, but may choose to add the topic to a future agenda. This agenda segment will be limited to 15 minutes. Is there any public comment tonight? Great. Okay. Boards and committee reports, none. Grants, gifts, and donations, none. Public hearing, none. New business, personnel policy update. I believe the chair of the Personnel Committee is here. Mr. Gleckman. Hello.
Good evening. Mark Gleckman, Chair of the Human Resources Board. I believe everyone has received in their packet some proposed changes to the personnel -- language changes to the personnel policy that we've put in front of you. These are all changes that we have voted on in the HR Board as appropriate. They've been put in front of town administration. They've been put in front of town council for their review and approval, which has happened. And the last step in the process is for you folks to vote on it. Just as a quick reminder, the history of this is that up until a few years ago, any changes to the personnel policy required town meeting approval, which turned out to be cumbersome and certainly not time-sensitive if we decided to edit or update the personnel policy, which is created as a living document. It's with the understanding that every few years we might spot something that needs change, an update. It might be based on mass general law. It might be based on common sense or anything in between. And so what we realized a number of years ago is that in order for town meeting to vote on any language changes, we might have to wait six or nine months. And so we came to the select board. You folks agreed to put on a warrant that year, a change to the bylaw, which allowed you folks to make the final approval on any changes. That vote was taken and approved at town meeting, and so here we are. It seems like every 18 to 24 months, we make an edit, an update, a change to the personnel policy as we deem it appropriate, and you folks have the final approval of that. So with that in mind, there are a few edits that we've made here primarily as it relates to the definition of a family in various sections of the personnel policy. In addition to that, there's one change as it relates to how we compute sick leave or what's designated as permanent part-time employees. Pretty straightforward. And so with that, let me just stop and ask if you folks have any questions, either myself or Leslie Doyle.
Diane Doyle.
Diane Doyle.
Excuse me. Diane Doyle, our treasurer collector, and one of the employee representatives in town, as well as Chief Fisher is also here, one of the employee representatives to the HR Board. Any of us are more than happy to answer any questions you have. At that point, we would ask you to vote on them, up or down. And assuming that they're approved, then we'll make the changes to the personnel policy.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I just -- it starts with J. I'm assuming that A through I had no changes. Is that correct?
Yeah. The personnel policy is about a 64, 65-page document that we created a number of years ago along with the town administration and town council. And so what we did for the ease of this conversation is just to pull out those sections that we're editing.
That's what I assumed. Just checking.
I think you may also have a copy of the entire document that was sent to you as well. But we just offer today's purposes, it would be easy just to talk about the edits.
Okay. Thank you. Jeff, do you have any questions?
No.
Leslie?
No.
It's not a question, but I like the idea of the clarifications. I like the idea of the extended family members, including stepchildren, so on and so forth. It sounds pretty consistent with other type policies for not only towns, municipalities, but businesses as well. So I think you folks did a great job.
Thank you.
The only thing that's unusual about this is that if you look at the various edits we've made, the definition of a family changes ever so slightly depending upon what the nature of the policy is. If it's a benefit, as an example, a bereavement, as an example. We felt it was appropriate to expand the definition of family if unfortunately there was a death and it required an employee to be out for two or three days. We thought it was appropriate that the definition of family in that respect was a little bit broader than might be for something else in the policy, which is why you see the differences. And the only other thing I'll mention is that in the last edit, which is -- which relates to nepotism, as you can see, the changes that were made there, we actually in the HR Board were in favor of the broader definition of family there. We thought it would be appropriate to include, you know, various other family members, to be careful with nepotism. However, town council made it very clear to us that because that is part of mass general law as opposed to a benefit, that because it's mass general law 268A, which falls under not only nepotism but conflict of interest, this is the definition of family according to the state, and we have to map to that. Otherwise, we run the risk of being liable, so that's why it's narrow there.
Very good.
Could you just briefly -- the sick leave changes. Could you talk about the sick leave changes?
The computation?
I just -- I actually, I don't have it in my --
You don't have it. It's the underline.
Oh, that's the bereavement leave. Is that what you're referring to?
So the changes are, see where this line is here?
Right.
That's one change, and it's underlined.
Right.
The second change is here, under domestic leave, here.
Okay. So it's all encompassing sick leave?
Correct.
Gotcha.
Yeah. We changed the definition of family.
Yep, yep, yep. No, I understand.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then how sick leave is computed for permanent part-time employees.
Okay. Any further questions?
Any questions?
All in favor of -- I'll entertain a motion. I believe I need a motion to accept the changes to the personnel.
I would make a motion to accept the changes done on the personal policy.
I would second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for your work on --
You're welcome.
Thanks, Martha.
Happy to hear you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Town of Newbury's rodenticide policy regarding escars, second-generation anticoagulant rodenticides. So you have before you a draft policy obtained from the town council. Me, Talon, and Pasta. I'll entertain a motion to accept this policy.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion and a second? Discussion. Any discussion on this? Jeff?
I don't really have any discussion beyond the fact that I think a lot of people realize I'm probably more in the mosh and outdoors than most, and it makes a lot of sense. I've -- I am acutely aware that rodents can be a problem, but I'm also acutely aware that certainly our predators on wings and forefeet certainly have their work cut out for them nowadays anyway. And if this lends to a better ear for those folks to continue to do their job and raise their families in the wild, I'm all for it. Also --
No, I'll speak about that later. Go ahead.
Leslie, do you have any comments?
No.
Questions?
Nope. Pretty much exactly what Jeff said.
Bill?
What I'm thinking is that the group that was here at the last meeting talked about, perhaps, evidence that this may be used in some of our municipal buildings now. So I'm thinking that if we institute a policy that says it can't be used, we need to do diligence and check out our municipal facilities, buildings, to make sure that we're -- if we write a policy that says it can't be used, make sure we're not using it now. And then --
So that's a good point.
Correct it.
So --
You mean have some that are there left over or something?
I mean, I don't know what's in those traps.
Yeah.
So the Board of Health, I believe, is a group that contracts with rodent -- nope. So --
Exterminators.
Exterminators. So I believe -- Tracy, correct me if I'm wrong. The town has an extermin -- not an extermination, but what do you call it? What's the word I'm looking for?
Pest abatement.
Yeah. Pest abatement plan. So I did reach out earlier today, and I asked the town administrator to ask our health agent if it's even possible to have other forms of pest control. And it is. And the budgetary impact should be minimal, if any. So I did ask that. So in the spirit of all that, I would entertain a vote. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. This is our new policy. Thank you. And that's it? Okay. So next on the agenda is a Town of Newbury flag policy. This town -- The policy provides guidelines for the town flying or presenting some flags on Newbury town-owned properties. And I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to accept the policy. Approve the policy, yes.
I will second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
I like it. First of all, just want to clarify that. The collectively or individually, as context requires, town property, the flag of the United States of America and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, as well as any other flags deemed appropriate by the town for parades, holidays, other events, and celebrations. I, in my humble opinion, think that possibly the United States of America, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the town flag, the Newbury town flag, and then I just want to put up for discussion POW, MIA, whether that would be appropriate to also include in that list of flags as being approved from flying from town flag poles.
So what are you asking?
I want to -- I'm just one -- I don't want to restrict the use of the town flag hanging on town flag poles. And I also don't -- I'm just -- I understand the purpose. With the -- is the POW, MIA in conflict with what this is intended to do? That's my question. Because I would like to include that flag also as being an appropriate flag to hang. You know, I mean, let's take a flag pole. You got the United States flag. You got the Massachusetts state flag. You got the Newbury town flag. Under that, you'd have the POW flag.
So I think it says here, as well as any other flags deemed appropriate by the town for parades, holidays, and other events. So I think Memorial Day would be appropriate to fly?
Well, it says for parades. It doesn't talk -- it kind of doesn't talk about on flag poles. It talks about like, let's say we're in a parade and we're walking down the street, and I want to wave a flag, you know.
No, no, no. This is not about that.
Okay.
This is just flying flags on our flag poles.
Town property.
On town property.
Non-property.
Right. Okay.
Okay. So this policy provides guidelines for the town flying or presenting on the Town of Newbury-owned properties or properties otherwise within the care, custody, or control of the town collectively or individually, as the context requires. They're calling it town property. The flag of the United States of America, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, as well as any other flags deemed appropriate by the town for parades, holidays, and other events and celebrations. So in other words, on the Fourth of July, even though town offices are closed, if we decide we want to fly the American flag or another type of a flag, we can. The choice by the town of which flag to raise on property is hereby declared to be government speech communicating a message to the public to which the strictures of the First Amendment do not apply. The town presently does not, nor does it intend, to designate the flying of the flags on town-owned property as a public forum by permitting a non-governmental party to raise a particular flag. Accordingly, it is the town's choice, acting by and through the select board, of whether to raise or decline to raise a flag on town property. The manner in which such a decision is made in adoption of this policy shall not be interpreted as designating any town property as public forum for flying of flags. This policy does not apply to the public schools of Newbury and on the properties that are controlled thereby. So it doesn't cover Triton. So the policy is the select board of the town administrator and its designee shall ensure the proper execution of this policy. It may be amended in the future by the select board in its sole discretion. The flying or presentation of flags other than the ones stated above, such as ceremonial flags, are not intended to create or to serve a forum for free expression by the public as stated above. So that would be the ceremonial flags that you're talking about, the MIA and the POW. Nothing in this policy shall be constructed to restrict in or to restrict or in any way limit the display of flags displayed on privately-held cemetery plots consistent with cemetery regulations. Just about flying flags on our flagpole, on our flagpole.
I know. So no one thinks we should add the Newbury town flag or the POW flag to the list?
I think it's covered.
I'm just saying, you know.
I think it's covered. I think as well as any other flags deemed appropriate by the town.
Okay.
I think that covers that.
Will we have a posting on website stating what the appropriate flags are for people to use?
We'll put our -- we'll put the policy up.
Will people have to come in or apply to use different kinds of flags to make it more understandable?
What do you mean?
Like what Dana's talking about. Will people have to --
So what this is saying is that flying a flag --
It says the American flag and the state flag.
Yeah. It's not considered government speech. It's not free speech. That's why. So the Town of Newbury Select Board, because we are a body of five, decides that we want to fly the Town of Newbury flag, we can.
So we're the only -- Tracy and the only people who have a say on what flags can be flown?
Correct.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I just interject that?
Yes.
I believe James did an inventory of town-owned flag poles. Those are the only flag poles we're talking about.
So --
We're not talking about the flag at my house.
No, I understand that's private property.
So it's town -- it's just town property.
Is that --
So it's the town, it's the flag?
They're right there.
Oh. Jeff? Can you read that, Jeff?
Yeah. I will read this, and then let me make a statement right afterwards. It's something for us to just discuss quickly. This is the flagpole inventory. We have flags of flag poles at the Newbury Upper Green, maintained by the DPW. Newbury Lower Green, boat ramp. 25 High Road, which is the old town hall, DPW maintained. 81 Central Street, DPW maintained. Newbury Fire Station, Newbury Police Station, police maintained, fire maintained on the above. DPW Garage, DPW maintained. And Veterans Park and Post Office. Can I make a --
Yeah.
If I understand this correctly, and correct me if I don't. So instead of having an onslaught of a myriad of things that could occur on our flag poles, it's kind of being cut down to a pathway through the floor to selecting for what seems kind of appropriate to go on our flag poles.
Correct.
I do agree with Dana at one point, unless I read this wrong. If it is to go through us, and maybe we can do it tonight and not do it, but certainly our town flag should have the ability to go up on the pole without a lot of
Right.
Excuse me. And I think anything to do with, you know, missing in action or POW should have probably a pretty good segue too.
So would you --
So do I read that right right now, that it's restricted just to the flag of the United States and the Commonwealth of Mass flag? Because certainly we should vote to have our flag.
I mean, if we want to insert the language, is that what you're asking me to insert language to include?
Yeah.
So it'll read the flag of the United States of America, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Town of Newbury.
Sure.
The Town of Newbury.
Yep.
Right? Do you want the Town of Newbury?
Yes.
Then POW, MIA.
We all know what that flag looks like, the POW, MIA flag. Now, I'm not saying that we need to fly it. I'm just saying I don't think we should -- I don't think we need to hold a special meeting to approve that flag. I think it should just be in the verbiage so that if anybody wants to -- if we deem it appropriate on a particular holiday to put the POW, MIA flag up there underneath the other flags appropriately, we shouldn't have to -- we shouldn't have to give ourselves special permission to do that. That's all I'm trying to say.
Well, I think I feel at ease to vote on at least those two being kind of within, let's speak of the meaning of the --
Are you okay with that, though?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I think if we can kill that first motion and make a motion to accept this with those additions, we can finalize this tonight.
That's a good idea. I make --
Well, I just ask a question. Where the World War II memorial is, is that town property?
Yes.
Okay. So that would be an appropriate place to put the POW flag?
Veterans Park. Oh, yeah. The POW flag is appropriate to fly any of these places.
Yeah.
Jeff, I have a question about the flag poles. Did you mention Central Street?
I did.
Oh. Okay. Yep. Just wondering. Because I knew it's --
We have nine. We have nine flags.
Okay.
Someone blew down the blue down in the storm.
Yeah, yeah. I just --
So --
So I guess --
Go ahead.
I'll entertain an amendment to include that language?
Just for the sake of ease, correct me if I screw this up. I'd like to make an amendment to the Town of Newbury flag policy. Not only the flag of the United States of America and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, but to also include the town flag and the POW and missing in action flag. Does that sound okay?
Is there a second?
I would second that.
Okay. Any further discussion on the amendment?
I have one more question.
Yeah.
Does -- will this prohibit the people that put up -- I know it's an American flag, but I'll be --
Hold on. I want to just vote that amendment, then we'll go back to the main motion.
Okay.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor of that amendment?
Of the amendment?
Yeah.
Of the amendment.
Say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Any opposed? No. Now we'll go back to the main motion as amended. Leslie, you got a question?
Yes. The telephone poles that are at the Upper Green and here in Byfield, are those on town property as well, where they're -- I don't have this, so I --
I can't answer that for sure, but you're talking about the American flags that go up on the poles.
Yeah.
I believe that's probably on state property and maybe, I don't know who owns the poles, but certainly it's going to be on the state right away, right?
I would -- I always understood that the phone company owns the poles.
And I think the poles are owned by, you know, the utility company.
Yeah.
Because they fix them when they want.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, it's unanimous. Okay. Thank you. Next is the proposed zoning amendments from the Planning Board. So we have two proposed zoning amendments. The MBTA Communities Multi-Family Zoning Bylaw and the Y Airless Communication Facilities Bylaw. These came up to us from the Planning Board. We need to refer them back to the Planning Board so that they could hold their public hearing on this. We have the Chair of the Planning Board and our Town Planner here. Who would like to come up and explain to the Board?
You want to go through these line by line, please?
Yeah, I will. You don't want to be out before midnight, do you?
So Martha Taylor, Town's Planning Director, and thank you very much for considering these. Just as Alicia said, under Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, any zoning amendments that are going to go before town meeting need to be submitted to the Select Board to then be submitted to the Planning Board for public hearing. So there are two that the Planning Board itself is proposing this year. The first one, you're familiar with at this point because we've talked about it, is the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Zoning Bylaw. We've had a number of planning board meetings about this. We also held the Joint Planning Board Select Board meeting in the beginning of December. And so what we have meeting tonight is a proposal for the bylaw on proposing an overlay district with four sub-districts, due north, due south, as we've discussed. And the bylaw includes a description of those districts as well as some design guidelines. This is still being fine-tuned. And we are working towards having our public hearing open on February 21st. So we're continuing to work with the Maryland County Planning Commission.
Thank you, Martha.
You're welcome. I'm happy to answer any questions about it or go through anything if you'd like.
Okay. So this is only in regards to the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Zoning Bylaw? Do I have any questions of the Board? Dana?
I do, Martha. On the -- well, I call it the last page, but that's because that's the way I stapled it. The -- I do recognize that we talked about the area. Is it Highfield Road that goes out to Scotland Road? And we -- I know that on the original, there was one across the street from that. It appears like that has been taken off of the plan. Is that correct?
That's correct. After further discussion, it really seemed like, at least for this round, it made most sense to really look at two sub-districts in the north part of town and two sub-districts in the south part of town. So one is -- one in each is a higher density and a lower density.
Yeah. Okay. So is each of these sections going to have a different density?
No. So what you see here is the North A.
Okay. I understand. I get it now. I guess my question is, is that, you know, I personally would like to meet the minimum requirements from the state to comply with this overlay. It's with the -- I believe the density is 15 units per acre?
15 units per acre minimum.
Right. That's the density, correct?
Which could be averaged out through our entire overlay district.
Okay. The three pieces that are in North A, actually, it's just North A, those three pieces right there, I'm just envisioning each of those sections, if they were built to maximum capacity, that would be pretty ugly. I just -- right there. You know what I mean? I mean, that's a lot of houses.
So the purpose of this coming before us is to refer it to the Planning Board? And then the Planning Board is going to have a public hearing?
Public hearing. So this can still be modified at the public hearing?
Oh, it's got to get voted on at town meeting.
Right. So it'll be modified if there are any comments that come in during the public hearing process. At the end of that, that's what we'll go for town meeting.
So my suggestion is if you have comments like this, show up to the public hearing. You know what I mean?
Yeah. I'm just trying to get a grip at what I'm actually voting on. So I am voting --
To refer this back to the Planning Board so they can schedule a public hearing.
So they can schedule -- and additional modifications can be made. Are you going to revise the plan after the public hearing based on the comments that you receive at the public hearing?
The Planning Board may. They may decide to do that, they may not.
They may or they may not.
That's the process.
Okay. And I know you're not done yet. I apologize. And we're going to vote -- I apologize. And and we're gonna, we're gonna vote tonight, this, all of this, like what we just talked, the MBTA requirement. And then we're gonna talk about the, let me get this straight, the the Business in Light Industry and the Wireless Overlay District.
Okay, right now, we're gonna take them separately.
Well, they they didn't appear to be separate in the package to me. I thought it was all one vote.
So they're here, yeah, they're two separate things. Right now, we're only talking about this. We'll get to this one next.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Yep.
So do you have any further questions, Martha, on the MBTA community zoning? Do you understand the process, what we have to do tonight?
I don't.
Okay. Any questions on this side?
No.
Jeff?
Yeah. So in essence, if these, with the crappy ways we can build utilities now and other things, if all of these happen to suddenly be deemed by developers to be beautiful places that they want to put 15 units per acre, that 10% of affordable housing aspect is out the window now because, you know, you could become, with that density, you could become 22% affordable housing in your town.
Well. Backtrack, try to answer, so under.
I don't mean that to be a, you know, a snake pit or anything, I'm just curious to say, so. And I kind of, from my years on the planning board, also know that you can wish for things and there's always things that get in the way, but let's say we went from, what are we now, 3% affordable housing?
3.1, based on 2010 census, so it's probably gone down from that.
So, I mean, if we suddenly went to, you know, probably, I think affordable housing is important. I think you can also, you know, quickly have a lot of it and might not be prepared for it. I think the governor's budget right now is reflecting, she's gonna get really, you know, large trouble. She's trying to cut lots of earmarks and taxes and everything else because of a lot of what she's put into the affordable housing bills she has, so it can get expensive real quickly if all of a sudden affordable housing appears. Not against affordable housing, but a phased in, you know, something, I would hate to get a lot of affordable housing all at once.
So just to clarify, all, under the MBTA community zoning, multi-family zoning, we can only, we can only require up to 10% affordable housing.
So that still is applicable.
So that is still applicable.
And that's good enough.
And our trigger here is any development of 10 units or more, 10%, so if you had 10 units, it would be one unit out of those.
Yeah. That clarifies a lot. And not saying that it has to be held 10%, but certainly we probably need some affordable housing, but I really, like I said, hate to have that all built on all of a sudden.
But this is not, excuse me, Martha, this is not affordable housing, it's multifamily.
It's not affordable housing, it's multifamily. And again, we're just talking zoning, we're not actually talking, you know, actual build out or development, this is just to zone to allow multifamily housing in these districts.
So the 10% is not even a factor with this, really?
Well, it's.
Is it, or?
Yeah, I mean, if we have a development that's 10 units, then we'd be requiring one unit of affordable housing. Under, under the bylaws, we've drafted it right now.
Even under the MBTA?
Yes.
Communities?
Yeah. And again, all all the board is asking right now is to refer it back to the planning board for a public hearing.
Would there be any restrictions on on contractors to, let's just say a contractor bought all of North A. Would there be any restrictions for them to absolutely max it out with with condos or housing, or, there would be no restrictions?
It's, it it will be zoned for a certain number, but that doesn't mean they're gonna build it. A lot of things, like site constraints and everything.
Oh, sure, yeah, 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 yeah.
Sewer.
Yeah.
Water.
I I, I know.
Okay, any, any other questions?
You know, it's funny, though, and I guess I could be, I know, but at least we're shedding some light for questions to be asked later. Once again, kinda on the tail, on, did I say it right on the draft of what Dana was just talking about? I would hate to see, like, a vast amount of very expensive condos go into these. So can you clarify again what, so are these people, are these parcels were laying aside that I didn't read, did I read it wrong? That were setting, or could be setting aside for the MBTA overlay district? There's no, those could be three quarter of a million dollar condos that go in there, too?
It's multifamily.
It's multifamily, so anything that's.
They could be really expensive condos just packed tightly into a bundle and thrown in there.
If it's multifamily.
Yeah, it's it's up to the developer. Our hope certainly is.
That's what I'm saying, it's up to the developer.
Yeah, but.
We'll get some, the hope is to get rental units and probably a mix of different things is what we're really looking for.
So it really doesn't solve our affordable component if you if you think of it dialectically, you know?
Well, there will be.
It'd be very expensive.
They they could be, but again, 10% will be affordable.
Yep.
Yeah, this, this whole MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District, it doesn't, I don't believe it was drafted to address the need for housing, or low income housing.
So what was it, who was it drafted for?
It was about multi, it was about addressing communities, I think, like ours, that have zoning issues, to make it multifamily zoning, to try to make it a little bit more dense around the MBTA areas.
And really to increase the diversity of housing.
Right.
And housing, housing choice.
Right.
Okay, I, this, I'm looking at the first page here, and number three, it says, "An amendment to Chapter 97, zoning Article 4, regulation of overload districts, wireless communication facilities."
Yeah, we haven't got that yet.
But but how are we, how are we, how are we breaking these out into three different pieces?
Because they're two different, they're two different, this is, we're talking about this one, we haven't got here yet.
Right, so the first, if you're looking at the cover letter here, the first two items are related to the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Zoning. So we're creating, we're creating the zoning bylaw, but along with that, we're also creating an overlay district, and so there needs to be an amendment to our zoning map, which will show that that overlay district. So that's what what one and two are about. Three and four are regarding expanding the Wireless Communications District, which will also require a map revision.
That's next.
Okay, so when we vote, how are we breaking out these?
We're just voting, well, all we're voting.
On number, on number?
One and two right now.
Yeah, no, well, we're voting, I believe, geez, nobody wrote it down, but I believe we're voting to refer this bylaw back to the planning board so they can have their public hearing.
Okay.
That's all we're voting on.
And it's just one and two? Right, right now?
It's anything to do with, with the, with the multi-districts, multi-community, MBTA Communities Multi-Family bylaw, we need to refer it back to the planning board so they can have their public hearing.
Right, so we're just voting on one and two?
Yeah.
Yep.
Right now, we're gonna vote on three and four next.
Next.
Yeah.
But with Larry and Martha here, can we, I mean, I don't think we have to rush it along, I know, but, like, another question would be, I do think we need more affordable housing. Is there a way to make it possible that you have more than a certain percentage of affordable housing in each one of these developments? Than we usually have? What are we getting? 10% out of 20 would be two? Can you ask for 15% if we wanted?
If we want to do more than 10%, we have to have an economic feasibility analysis done. At least for this round, to to stay with the 10%, which we are allowed to require.
Because it is changing all the density requirements that Plum Island, I mean, excuse me, that Newbury has ever had, including Plum Island, right? We've never had that much density ever in our town before, right? Or have we?
No, we haven't. I mean, we don't even, we only allow multifamily in two districts right now, up to four units, so this is certainly.
Interesting.
Something different.
And we're required to do this, and we're required to do this by the state.
Just the whole concept is really interesting.
Yeah, and so, yeah, and and I think the big picture here is that, right now, the way our bylaws are written, anything like this would require a special permit. So what we're doing is we're waiving the special permit process for a developer to come in and 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 build these types of homes in these districts.
I don't think that's.
Is that basically what we're doing?
We don't allow multifamily by special permit, do we, Martha?
We only do in two districts, the Upper Green Business District and in in the Byfield Village Business District, and that's only up to four. So that allowed the Woodbridge School to be redeveloped and it allowed the church in Byfield to be.
You can have no more than four units.
It's under our existing bylaw.
Yeah, well, on the corner of Maple Street and Orchard Street.
Duplex house.
What's that?
It's a duplex house.
It's duplex?
It's just what I'm worried.
Which is allowed, two families allowed.
Okay, in our current bylaws.
Yeah.
It's just what I'm worried about is we could get a lot of this multifamily development in our town and really not come out of it with as much affordable housing that would really be appropriate, I mean.
I, I think a couple of things, and we will get some, we're requiring some affordable housing to come out of it, and with more density, the pricing of the housing should be much more affordable than it is now, even if it doesn't fall in the affordable category according to the state definition.
No, but I'm smiling, I mean, when we've got houses that have gotten closer together in Newbury, they're still like a million point nine. You know, so it's really, to me, this doesn't really, it does, so that, the idea is to make more diverse housing, it certainly isn't solving your affordable housing problem.
Right. That's my understanding.
And that's, that's really.
And it's not intended to, it really is.
Can I say baloney at this?
It's to, it's to create diversity in housing, it's to create more multifamily, because right now we only have up to four. Okay, any more questions?
So just a statement, I mean, there's a lot of good discussion, and there's also an event here at the library next Monday that may answer some of your questions, and maybe you can bring those questions up to Martha and the audiences there, okay? Because we seem to have drifted away from just asking these two amendments to move to the planning board.
Right.
Which is the science we all were voting on.
Right, housing, housing is a big issue.
I have to say this, I would always support the planning board bill, but I think it's important to move them, but I mean, if I, if I definitely didn't believe in these things, I might vote no.
Oh, I understand, Jeff.
So I'm getting a little understanding tonight.
I understand.
Okay, any further questions? All right, all in favor? Aye.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
To pass these forward to the.
Yeah, do we have a motion to move it to the planning board in a second? We have that, right?
Motion to move the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District to the planning board.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, now let's talk about wireless.
So just a little background on that one, as we were talking back in annual town meeting 2022, the planning board proposed a revision, a comprehensive revision of our Wireless Communications Bylaw. And that was adopted. At the time, we noted that our consultant, who had done a drive-through of the town and identified certain areas where the coverage is really poor, had recommended that we expand our Wireless Tower District. And the two recommendations were along High Road, actually, at the DPW site, and also along Elm Street, potentially the Triton, two parcels owned by the Triton District, so that's what's being proposed right now, is to expand the Wireless Tower District to include those three parcels.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
It makes sense.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to accept wireless districts as proposed.
No, motion to.
To submit these to the planning board for a public hearing.
Submit these back to the planning board for the public hearing.
Yep, for public hearing.
Second.
All right, so I have a mo, motion and a second, okay? Any discussion? Now Dana, you want to talk about this?
I do.
Questions for this?
Yeah.
It's not you.
The DPW site, I remember years ago, Plum Island is is rather lacking in in Wi-Fi capabilities down there. I know that they've done a lot of, you know, remote telephone pole repeaters or whatever you want to call them, and I also remember that right at the base of Old Town Hill, on the corner of High Road right there, was a, was deemed a decent, a good location because it actually would broadcast directly to Plum Island. It would, it would, it would actually allow a lot of people on Plum Island to to be able to receive that. The DPW site, I I think that that is a decent compromise. I guess my my question was the elevation, geographical elevation distant, difference between where the DPW sits and, for example, the base of Old Town Hill right there on the corner of High Road. Is there, is there much of a significant difference in in elevation between those two sites? And and will we be able to achieve what we want to on, at the DPW site?
Again, this was based on our consultant's recommendation after he did the drive-through. I would say, I don't know this for sure, but I think the DPW site may be actually somewhat higher than the base of Old Town Hill if you're talking right at the corner of Newman Road. And we also talked about.
No, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm more up by Riverview Drive, that, that.
Oh.
That, that area right there, because from the DPW on Oak Pine Allen Road, you do, you still are going slightly uphill until you get to like the top of Riverview Drive, where I think Tru's new housing development is right there. And then, and then it starts going back down into the valley where the Parker River is, so, but I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, that's okay.
Yeah.
You know, again, we're going on his recommendation, he thought that this would, this would be a good site to provide coverage both out to Plum Island as well as those spots along High Road where we know are poor coverage, like a blacked out circle.
Right. I read, does the DPW site give us enough setback for like a 65-foot tall, tall tower?
There, there may need to be some adjustments in terms of of the dimensions, so.
Okay.
Do they make them small enough?
I think they, you know, they come in different heights.
Well, that's, it's, in the paperwork, it could be up to 65 feet tall.
Right.
But I think they make them smaller now.
And and I do like, I do like the, what's in here about, you know, disguising the tower, you know, I, we all have seen them. As you, as you're going down the, you know, Route 90 heading towards Springfield, you know, you can see these pine trees that look like they're 300 foot high, when really they're a cell tower, you know, so, and I know that all that verbiage is, is, has put in here, which I think, I think is, is, is good verbiage.
And actually, excuse me, I should clarify that the only portion of this that's really being proposed to be amended is under Number 2A1, 2 and 3, the highlighted information. The rest of it is the bylaw, as as it was approved two years, yeah, two years ago. So it's just adding those parcels to the Wireless Tower District.
Okay, all right. And just one more comment, moving over to the, to Triton. It's, would be Site 18 and Site 60, which is basically across the street from Triton. Site 60, isn't that where Triton's Leach and Field is located? Isn't that, that's piece of property?
That's correct. So if you look at the, at the plan, you'll see the wetlands going right through the middle of it, and the septic field is to the left of that.
The, the, Section Dash 18, which is, I believe, where Triton School is located, isn't it, in that shaded area?
Yeah.
How would the utility companies get access to, to, to where that tower is gonna go, possibly on that property? It, it's not, the only, the only access I see is the entrance to Triton and the exit from Triton. So how would the utility companies get, I mean, would it have to be an easement or something so they could go in there and and maintain the the tower site, or how would that?
That would be part of the lease agreement. There are other sites in town where there are towers located on parcels and.
They're, they're, I want, landlocked, is it? So we have others like that in town already?
Right, right. So, you know, they would need to work out with Triton exactly where, where the tower would be located, how it would be accessed, because there would be maintenance access over time. And that would all be part of the sighting and then the lease agreement.
I guess, sitting at Central Field, it's sixty-five foot tower is going to be right there.
Just making a comment.
Come on up there.
Larry Murphy, Chair of the Planning Board.
Hi, Larry.
Just add to what Martha had to say. It's not why these parcels were chosen, but they are owned by the town and by the school district, and they could be a potential source of revenue. But the town would have the final say in whether or not it would be permitted in the DPW site, as, as would the school district, you know, on any of their properties. So we're not giving anything away here, but we're just trying to improve cell service for the town. Because there, as you all know, there are very underserved areas in town.
Yes, there are.
It's a real public safety issue.
Thank you, Larry.
Thanks, Larry.
Okay, any further questions?
Not for me.
Jeff?
I will add, once you go behind Old Town Hill, it's lights out, there's nothing for cell service.
Leslie?
I have nothing.
Phil?
I'm good.
All right, all in favor of referring this back to the planning board so we can have their public hearing? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Schedule away.
A public hearing on February 21st, and as Bill mentioned, we are having the next info session for the Housing Production Plan next Monday, the 29th, at 6:30 at the library. MBTA Communities will be one of the topics of discussion. So anybody who has more questions, please come to both of those. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Martha.
Thank you, Martha. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is an appointment for the planning board. It's an associate member appointment. We have one gentleman that is interested in serving. I'll entertain a motion to appoint Stephen Manchin to the planning board as an associate member.
Motion to appoint Stephen Manchin to the planning board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Steve, thank you for serving, your willingness to serve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome aboard. You're welcome.
Fine diamonds.
Okay, so, next item on the agenda, we have business license renewals. We have Donald Walton, DBA Walton's Auto Lab, 78 Hanover Street, General Business Auto Marine. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? No, passes. James Bradshaw, DBA Plum Island Provisions, 29 Plum Island Boulevard, General Business, Common Victula.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Jeff is recusing himself. I'll entertain a motion for Josette Walker, DBA Josette's ADZ in Looms. 173 High Road, General Business.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. There's a fit by John, DBA, Care of John, A. Somebody else want to help me here?
De Zormo.
De Zormo?
De Zormo.
De Zormo.
Francis De Zormo.
De Zormo. Eighty-nine Hanover Street, Unit Three, General Business, Personal Training.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we have some one-day liquor licenses. They're all for the same facility, the BCAC. There's all various dates, I'll read them, I'll read them. I'll read them, we'll take them all as one unless I have, anybody has a. If you have anything that you want to hold on this, just yell hold and we'll come back and we'll talk. So I'll entertain a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for the BCAC for the local lounge, date January 26, 2024. Again, a one-day liquor license for the BCAC for the Blues Party dated, date January 28, 2024. A one-day liquor license for the BCAC for the Fool, dated 2/10/2024. One-day liquor license for the BCAC for Crazy Maggie on February 17, 2024. A one-day liquor license for the BCAC for Local Lounge, date February 23, 2024. A one-day liquor license for the BCAC, event name James Montgomery, dated 2/25/2024. Again, a one-day liquor license for the BCAC, event name Blues Party, date March 31, 2024. Again, a one-day liquor license for the BCAC for Frankie Vale, date April 5, 2024. A one-day liquor license for the BCAC for Evan Goodrow Band, dated April 6, 2024. And a one-day liquor license for the BCAC and the Clements Brothers, dated April 26, 2024. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I moved it, Leslie seconded it. Any discussion on these? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I just, I want to thank BCAC for submitting these in big chunks.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks for doing that, it's, it's very helpful, I know. It's probably a lot of work for you to come up with, but it's good.
It's actually less work on my end to do them all together.
Okay, thank you.
On the next, we have election worker appointments. I have John Callahan, Fort Torrey Lane. I'm just going to read them all. If you have any questions or anything, you can put a hold and we'll, we'll come back on that. John Callahan, Fort Torrey Lane, Lisa Dorville, 46 Low Street. Terry Literest, 45 Northern Boulevard, Wilma McDonald, 229 North End Boulevard in Salisbury. Molly Seamus, 35 Hanover Street. Karen Barry, 12 Parker River Drive. Esther Bernier, 55 Elm Street. Bart Bracken, 69 Pearson Drive. Nancy Burke, 10 Larkin Road. Deb Casey, 64 Carter Street in Newburyport. Barbara Fernald, 46 Lafayette Road in Salisbury. Carol LaRocque, 247 High Road. Joan Wayburn, 4 Hartway in Raleigh. Janine Cunningham, 143 Scotland Road. Marlene Coslow, 36 Caldwell Farm Road. Jessica McHale, 60 Old Raleigh Road. Kathy Muse, 10 Marsh Ave. Richard Keys, 38 Parker Street. Maxine Balkis, 4 Oak Terrace. Anne Borbeau, 21 Maple Street in Salisbury. Alex Burke, 10 Larkin Road. Carolyn Casey, 6 Forest Street. Wanda Crowe, 28 K Street. Heidi Fram, 21 Forest Street. David O'Neil, 31 Pearson Drive. And John Elwell, 266 High Street, Newburyport. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I want to thank all the workers for doing the work.
And volunteering, can't have an election without them.
Yeah.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Full business, none, Town Administrators report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The town has been notified that we are receiving a fair share amendment grant. This is in the amount of $154,833. It's additional funding above and beyond our normal chapter 90 appropriation. Usually we receive about $267,000, but this is above and beyond that. In consultation with the DPW Director, he said in all likelihood those funds will either be used for the Culverdon River Street or the Orchard Street project.
Very good.
So that's good news, and with the good news comes the bad news. The governor has announced the nine-seat cuts that Selectman Walker had alluded to because collections are falling short of the 2024 benchmarks. So they're going to make mid-fiscal year cuts. We've been told that these will not affect our municipal cher- charity aid or our school aid, but it will, it will impact outside sections of the, you know, the governor's budgets, those earmarks. I did have an opportunity earlier today to contact Senator Tarr's office, Valerie from her office, and she gave me a listing of all the different earmarks. It doesn't look right now as if Newbury is going to be impacted, but that remains to be seen as, as time goes on. Should we, should some of our grant funding be targeted at a future date, we'd be looking at a 50% reduction in what we were initially awarded. So I'll keep you posted if we, if we do have any, any reductions. The police, fire, and library collective bargaining sessions are ongoing. They're, they've been a little more lengthy this year. We have a lot of issues to discuss, a lot of changes being proposed. So hopefully we'll have those completed in time for inclusion in the 2025 operating budget. We also were notified of Triton's excess in deficiency. It was certified at $642,441. And Byfield Water District's free cash was certified at $374,227. Thank you.
Correspondence, I don't believe we have any meeting updates. So I had an opportunity this weekend to attend the Massachusetts Municipal Association Meeting, their annual business meeting, which took place in Boston. I heard, among other things, I heard Lieutenant, the governor spoke, the Lieutenant Governor spoke, Senator Markey and Senator Warren both spoke. I had an opportunity to hear from the Senate President Spilka and the Speaker of the House. And one of the things that we passed in the resolution of the. The MMA has two policy committees, so to speak of. One of them I sit on is the Fiscal Policy Committee. The other one is the Committee on Energy and the Environment, I don't sit on that one. So we, every year, vote a resolution that we recommend, and it goes to the governor for consideration and the legislature for their consideration. And we advocate on most things that you would like to, you know, normally think of, like we need more money for schools, we need more money for roads, please fully fund aga, and blah, blah, blah. But this year is interesting because we have one of the things, and I meet monthly with this group, and one of the things that I've been advocating for, and not only me, there's been a few other people in town, but one of the things that I brought up was to have a similar program like the Massachusetts School Building Association Program and the Library Program, where the state funds monies for municipal buildings, like town halls, DPW barns, those type of things. And this year, they actually put it in their resolution. So one of these, in the area of capital budget, so the resolution, I'm just not going to read the whole thing, but. It says, "The resolution supporting an enduring fiscal partnership between cities and towns and the Commonwealth in fiscal 2025 and beyond. Whereas the well-being and success of the residents and businesses of the Commonwealth depend on the fiscal health of cities and towns and the ability of local government to provide efficient and progressive public services and adequately invest in reliable and resilient public infrastructure. And whereas cities and towns are highly reliant on the tightly capped property tax to fund local budgets and capital programs. And this heavy reliance on the property tax severely limits the ability of cities and towns to respond to new challenges and opportunities, as well as adequately support necessary essential services for the public. And whereas adequate and sustained state support for local public schools is essential for student success and the health of the Massachusetts economy. And whereas the state's charter school finance statute imposes significant financial and program challenges for public school districts, particularly in regions where there is a large concentration of charter schools. And whereas state law limits the allowable growth in municipal revenues to a level that is far below the region's rate of inflation, exasperated by significant nondiscretionary cost drivers, which continue to grow at an unprecedented magnitude during the Proposition Two and a Half era. And whereas to become overly reliant on property tax and to ensure that municipalities have the fiscal capacity to deliver the high-quality municipal and school services that are essential to support local economies and families in every corner of the Commonwealth. It is imperative that cities and towns receive an adequate share of state revenues, have an effective and fair municipal tax system, have the tools necessary to plan for a full long-term, it, have a, I'm sorry, and have the tools necessary to plan for and fund long-term liabilities, have state support for investments in the municipal workforce and capital investments, and receive full funding for any new or existing state mandates. Therefore, it is hereby resolved that the members of the Massachusetts Municipal Association support the following essential positions, policy positions, to ensure a strong partnership between cities and towns and the Commonwealth in fiscal '25 and beyond." And they go on, they list a whole bunch of them, in the area of municipal school aid, there's a whole bunch, area of capital budgeting. One specific one is the governor and the legislature should work with cities and towns to identify the scope of investment needed to ensure that municipal buildings, critical to the delivery of essential public services, are safe and modern and enact a state funding mechanism and program to provide the resources needed to implement these improvements across the state. So that's something that I've been working on with that group and finally got put into this resolution this year and passed at the level. So hopefully, the legislature and the governor will take it up and will get some funding on that. This is posted on the MMA website. And that's what.
Kind of funding that was to fund their school budgets, so they say they're going.
Well, yeah, and that's.
Let home, all the other stuff.
Right, that's in here too, when they talk about school funding, they're advocating for a hundred dollar per pupil, a minimum increase of a hundred dollars per pupil. Fully fund. Here's another one that's important, is the governor and the legislature should review the calculation of the required local contribution under Chapter 70, including to target local share and adopt changes to mitigate reliance on the property tax to fund local schools, and should review and address fiscal challenges facing rural schools. That's us, that's that little thing, so that's in here. Talk about fully funding the Student Opportunity Act, fully funding McKenney Vento, fully funding reimbursements for regional school districts, and it goes on and on and on. There's a lot, I mean, there's a lot that we rely on the state for, but.
So that, that hasn't been, that's to be approved?
It was approved.
It was approved?
Yeah, and it's been sent to the governor and the legislature, it was approved on Saturday morning at their.
Awesome.
Office, yeah. So that was that, and any other meeting updates?
I have not had an Essex Vets since, since last.
Before Christmas?
Yeah, since before Christmas. I think we're, we're having one in February, so I have no updates there.
There is a DCC meeting coming up. Leslie and Jeff are both on the DCC. I did not post it as a public meeting, so I'm pleased, let's not have a quorum because we'll have posting issues otherwise. And Leslie, do you have any meeting update?
No, I didn't, I think the last one, thing I went to was the Rec Committee.
Okay.
And they made a nice presentation for their master plan and the improvements.
They've actually requested to come before the board, so I'm going to try and get them on. They need to present it to the board, so we'll try to get them on next, next month. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Question?
Yeah.
The grant for the $154,000, do you need a motion to accept that?
It wouldn't hurt.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the.
Forgot the name of the source.
Fair share amendment.
Fair share.
Make a motion to accept the grant from Fair Share for $154,833. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. And we have draft minutes. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
The only thing I saw in the minutes that.
Can I have a motion?
Oh, a motion to approve minutes.
Roger.
All right, there's a mo- motion and a second. All right, any discussion, Leslie, do you have?
Just a couple of typos, I don't know if.
Yeah, I caught a couple too.
Okay. Okay.
Which ones did you catch?
Let's see, um, on the last page, for meeting updates, determining sit availability.
Yeah, site.
It's Sosby Site.
Yeah.
And, uh, on the fourth page, evaluate vulnerabilities as a community with respect to seal.
Yeah, seal sunrise, I got that one too.
Okay.
I also wanted to add, um, where it says underneath that, um, Greco, A. Greco asked, do we still want to continue capital planning solution for municipal buildings? And do we want to rent in perpetuity and have our own discussion ensued? I'd like to, uh, insert the language general consensus to continue with our twenty-twenty-four goals for the Town Administrators Report. So I'll entertain a motion to amend it with that language.
Motion.
Go ahead. Got a motion in a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I think on page, on the bottom of page one. Um, I'm sure on the bottom of page one, it talks about, uh, S cars, it should really be S G A R S.
Yes. Thank you, I missed that one. Okay, apostrophe yes. Okay. And.
Yeah, I feel bad we didn't get one.
I'm surprised I did.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then. Now I lost my place. I think, motion to enter to, uh, Sir Lawrence.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
I'm motion to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.